Everyone. Um, my name is Moni Edwards and I am the Public Information Officer at the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority. We would like to welcome you to the public hearing for the first substantial amendment to the CDBG mitigation action plan. With me this evening, I have Mr. O'Dari Thomas. He is the Senior Engineer at VIHFA. He will be giving a brief presentation about the amendment to the action plan. Um, the purpose of this hearing is to inform the public about mitigation eligibility requirements, amendment, action, action plan amendments uncovered projects. So we ask that you hold your questions until the end of the presentation. If we do not get to every question we asked, that you send your questions, comments, anything that you would like for us to know, to media@VIHFA.gov. Again, that's media@VIHFA.gov and our comment period ends on August 7th. So again, thank you for coming and at this time I will turn it over to Mr. O'Dari Thomas, our Senior Engineer. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. O'Dari Thomas, Staff Engineer for the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority. Okay, so why are we here? Um, we are here because the US Virgin Islands received a grant allocation from Congress through the US Department of HUD. And it basically allotted in that federal register notice $774 million, more or less, of CDBG MIT funding to the US Virgin Islands. That MIT funding is distinctly different and separate apart from our previous grant of CDBG DR funding. Um, the MIT funding became effective in April 25th of this year, uh, when we signed and executed the grant agreement with HUD. And the reason we are here today is because we initially proffered an action plan, which is published on our website, on how we intended to utilize those CDBG MIT funds. Um, but today we are proposing a substantial amendment to that action plan to incorporate an additional use for some of that CDBG MIT funding. And we'll get into that in later slides. And per the FRN, we're required to conduct public hearings based on the grant allocation size that was awarded to us. And this is one of those hearings for the St. Thomas, St. John Water Island District. Next slide. So what is a mitigation activity? Uh, a mitigation activity as defined by the FRN is an activity that increases the resilience to disasters and eliminates the long-term risk of loss of life, injury, damage to and loss of property and suffering and hardship by lessening the impact of future disasters. Um, essentially this funding is to mitigate, uh, risk and threats to the community. Um, to help achieve a significant recovery, faster recovery, should any, uh, impending disaster occur in the future. Next. So in order to execute an activity with this funding, there are several criteria that must be met. Uh, they are listed on the slide. Uh, the first is that the activity must meet the definition I referred to in the previous slide of a mitigation activity. It also must address the current and future risk identified in the USVI's territorial hazard mitigation plan, which the custodian of which is the VITIMA for the government of the Virgin Islands. It also must be a CDBG eligible activity under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. And it must satisfy a HUD national objective, uh, which I will describe in the subsequent slide. Next. Two slides, I guess. Um, so no, you're fine. No, you're fine. So the action plan for MIT was informed by what is called a mitigation needs assessment. And that component basically analyzes the territorial hazard mitigation plan to identify risks um, that are still present and threaten the community. Um, and then the action plan is essentially a response to the risk identified in that territorial hazard mitigation plan. It can also incorporate additional risks that are identified subsequently, but that is the guiding document that was used to inform the mitigation needs assessment in the action plan. And essentially that action, that, uh, hazard mitigation plan covers seven, uh, community lifelines as defined by FEMA um, that are critical to supporting the needs of the community, um, in the event of a disaster. Namely, they are safety and security, food, water and shelter, health and medical, energy, uh, which consists of power and fuel, communications, transportation and hazardous materials. Next slide. Great. Um, so again, I told you that the mitigation activity must satisfy a CDBG MIT national objective. Um, those objectives are identified in the federal register notice uh, that is also published on our website. It's a public document. You have access to it. And essentially there are three national objectives that can be used to satisfy this requirement. The first is the low to moderate income national objective whereby, uh, 50% of our grant funds um, have to benefit low to moderate persons in the most impacted and distressed area. Um, there's also the urgent need mitigation national objective, uh, that addresses current and future risks to, uh, the territory as I, is identified in the mitigation need assessment. Um, and it results in a measurable and verifiable reduction in the risk of a loss in life and property to residents of the territory. Um, those are primarily the two main, uh, national objectives that will be, must be satisfied in order to utilize CDBG MIT funds. Um, and essentially there are different criteria that, uh, can be used to satisfy those objectives. Next slide. So the mitigation activities have been broken down into several buckets or categories that are identified in our action plan. Uh, the first is infrastructure and public facilities. The second is housing. The third is economic revitalization. And the fourth is planning and, uh, grant administration, and I think also public services and facilities. Um, but essentially we are targeting several activities in which to implement the use of this MIT funding and in order to best service the needs of the community and mitigate against any future disasters. Next slide. And these are just some of the project considerations, um, that were used to inform and determine, uh, what types of activities, uh, will be executed using the MIT funding. Excellent. So, uh, right now, the current budget allocation, uh, of $774 million um, is broken down into pools for the different activity categories. And the pockets are infrastructure and public facilities, 418 million. Economic resilience and revitalization, 76 million. Housing, 192 million. Excuse me, uh, public services and facilities, uh, 15 million. And grant planning and administration, uh, 32 million and 38 million respectively, for a total of 774 million. And we expect to expend 50% of that figure within the next six years and 100% within the next 12 years, uh, because that is the performance period identified by HUD for utilization of this funding. Next slide. So the main reason we're here, uh, is because we are amending that action plan in order to incorporate a substantial amendment for a major project. Um, that we have identified is needed in order to mitigate, uh, the risk to the energy lifeline for the territory. And we will go into more detail in that in the subsequent slides. Next. So a substantial amendment, um, must be executed if we are altering the, uh, eligibility criteria or benefits. Um, if we are including or subtracting any, uh, project activities, if we are modifying the allocation thresholds, or if we are introducing a covered project. And that leads me to the next slide, uh, because this project that we're proposing, uh, is a covered project and I will detail that subsequently. Covered project, the covered project is an infrastructure project having a total project cost of $100 million or more with at least $50 million of that funding coming from CDBG funds. Regardless of the source, whether it's CDBG DR, CDBG MIT, uh, CDBG CV, COVID, um, et cetera. Additionally, all new infrastructure covered projects trigger a substantial amendment, uh, which is the reason we're here this evening. Next slide. Uh, you can skip to the next one. A covered project has additional criteria that must be satisfied in addition to the criteria that I already mentioned for a mitigation activity. The additional criteria are that it must first demonstrate long-term efficacy and financial fiscal, sorry, sustainability, uh, and that must be demonstrated throughout the useful life of the project. Uh, it also requires that the activity have an operation and maintenance plan, uh, throughout the useful life of the project and funding for that must also be identified. Um, and it must document a measurable re- uh, reduction in risk. Additionally, it must demonstrate a benefit to the most impacted and distressed area or mid-area. Um, and this benefit must be demonstrated through utilization of a benefit cost analysis. Um, and then thirdly, it must be consistent with the other mitigation activities, meaning it does not undo any of the work that is already identified, um, or as a mitigation activity in the action plan, or it's not opposed to any of that work previously identified. Next slide. Uh, the benefit cost analysis, uh, there are several types, um, but specifically, uh, we utilize the FEMA benefit cost analysis method. Uh, that is kind of like the standard for the mitigation activities. Um, there are alternatives, but I won't go into those because for this particular project, the FEMA benefit cost analysis method was utilized. Next. Okay, so this substantial amendment, uh, as I indicated previously, will address a risk to the energy lifeline. Oh, sorry. Um, will address a risk to the energy lifeline. Um, and the purpose of that lifeline, the energy lifeline is to mitigate and solidify the efficiency and of long-term operation management of the utilities, fuel supply, critical to its power generation, thereby increasing reliability, um, and efficient generation. Next slide. So, uh, the current threats to the energy lifeline, as I indicated, this was taken into consideration in order to inform the mitigation needs assessment, uh, which is the guiding document, um, that essentially specifies how the funds should be used and, uh, which activities they should be used for. So the current threats to the energy lifeline are fuel insecurity. Uh, that is caused primarily by three categories we've broken them into. Physical damage to the assets, um, WAP, in this case, the utility, which is Viwappa. Um, stores fuel in storage tanks or vessels. Um, those can be damaged by wind-driven debris. Um, also they receive fuel shipments via dock, which can be impacted by storm surge. Um, additionally, equipment failure, it's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, fuel pump fails or something else fails, uh, causing an interruption in the fuel supply. And, uh, thirdly, supple- su- supply chain, uh, disruption, uh, which can be impacted by several factors. Uh, one of those can be an infectious disease. Additionally, are there economical constraints that can adversely impact the supply chain? Additionally, uh, unreliability is a threat currently to the energy lifeline. Um, that is primarily informed by equipment failure, uh, due to age generation. Um, thirdly, high fuel costs, pretty self-explanatory. Um, and in this case, uh, WAPA makes power utilizing two fuel sources, uh, number two diesel fuel and LPG or propane. Um, and for that LPG, there is currently only one fuel supplier. And, uh, finally, uh, lack of redundancy. Um, again, if the authority only has under their control one fuel source, which is that diesel fuel source, uh, then they are beholden to make power on utilizing the fuel source that they have access to under their control. Next slide. Oh, with that being said, the covered project that we are proposing for funding with the MIT act, MIT funding is the acquisition of the VTAL LPG storage facilities on both St. Thomas and St. Croix. Uh, those two LPG facilities currently supply fuel to the two power plants in both districts. And they are currently the only source of LPG fuel for the authority. Uh, as I indicated, that LPG terminal or those terminals are owned and operated currently by a third party. And thus that means that they are not directly under the authority's control. Therefore, we are proposing a covered project in order to acquire those facilities. And that will result in the authority receiving title and ownership to those assets in both districts. Um, so this, uh, yeah, this, uh,
uh, diagram kind of outlines essentially how the authority receives its fuel shipment from LPG. Uh, there's a vessel that comes in and goes in to its docks. It pumps propane into several storage tanks. Um, that propane is stored in liquid form. It's subsequently pumped downhill to a vaporizer system, which is a steam system, uh, that turns it into a gas. And that gas is utilized by the generators that are owned and operated by WAPA. Um, that's a high-level presentation of how WAPA currently gets its, uh, fuel supply. And we are proposing to give them funding in order to take, uh, full control of that supply chain. Next slide. So what are we getting? As indicated, we're getting full ownership of both propane facilities or LPG facilities um, in the St. Thomas and St. Croix district. That consists of both onshore and offshore infrastructure. The onshore infrastructure are storage tanks, uh, the steam system or the boilers that convert the propane from liquid form into gaseous form. Um, the piping, uh, and pumping and associated infrastructure and, uh, a truck rack which serves as an additional fuel dispensing point. The offshore infrastructure consists of a mooring buoy, uh, that's positioned 5.3 nautical miles to the south of St. Thomas. Uh, the bracing and mooring dolphins that were installed at the facility's fuel docks and the firewater pumps, uh, which utilize seawater for fire suppression on the LPG terminal. Uh, this facility or these facilities have a projected 20-year useful life uh, remaining in their in operation. Um, and that will essentially give WAPA, uh, you know, a very durable and, uh, reliable fuel system for their LPG. Next. So what's the cost? Uh, this acquisition has a project cost of 145 million. And that will be coming from the infrastructure category of funding or activity that I indicated previously. Um, and it again will give the authority ownership over all of the, uh, LPG infrastructure. Next slide. So this acquisition actually, uh, does provide significant mitigation, um, of risk to the energy lifeline because you cannot make energy without fuel. Uh, if the lights are on, some generator or somewhere, in this case, it happens to be WAPA's plant, uh, is consuming fuel in order to produce energy because, uh, energy is produced in real time in the absence of batteries. Um, and the facilities as they are constructed are housed in concrete bunkers. The tanks are stored in concrete bunkers, which significantly reduce their susceptibility to damage in the event of a severe wind, in the event of a severe, uh, windstorm. Um, as opposed to the exposed steel diesel fuel tanks, uh, that have no protection and can and have actually sustained damage in previous windstorms. Um, additional benefits are that it allows the authority to maintain, uh, lower fuel costs because it will give them full custody of that supply chain for LPG. Um, and they will be able to source it more competitively on the open market. Um, that by extension also will facilitate, um, lower propane transportation costs. Um, it improves fuel redundancy because now the authority will have under their control both the LPG and the diesel fuel supply, thus increasing their fuel inventory, uh, under management. Um, it improves fuel security for the same reason. Um, it also improves drinking water security because the drinking water in the territory is produced by remote os- reverse osmosis. Um, that process is mechanically and energy intensive. It requires large pumps, uh, to pump the water through the process. Um, and by bolstering the energy security of the utility, it will inadvertently also, um, bolster the resiliency of the water supply. Um, it also will result in improved reliability because WAPA's newest and most efficient generation assets burn LPG as their primary fuel source. So by giving us WAPA access and control over the LPG fuel system, it will allow them to run their most efficient and reliable, uh, generation capacity, uh, without, uh, any interruption. And then also an improved environmental profile because LPG is a cleaner burning fuel than diesel, uh, so it will improve the environmental emissions profile of the authority overall. And these are all significant benefits, uh, that will be realized by the authority if this project is approved. Next slide. So should we do it? Um, as I mentioned previously, we performed a benefit cost analysis, uh, to determine whether or not the, uh, executing the activity will result in tangible benefits, uh, toward the community. And the key, uh, factor is in order for that criteria to be satisfied, uh, the model must receive a benefit cost ratio or must result in a benefit cost ratio of 1.0 or greater utilizing the FEMA BCA methodology. So if the BCR is above 1.0, uh, then it will have been proven to satisfy the, uh, the criteria. And in this analysis, uh, we took into consideration the, uh, pre-mitigation impact, which essentially means if WAPA over the next 20 years only has diesel by which to generate electricity, uh, what would the projected average fuel cost be? Um, there was a sophisticated model run, um, to perform that analysis. Um, and then the post-mitigation impact, meaning if we do this activity and we acquire the facility and WAPA has access to LPG and diesel under their control, uh, what is the average, uh, fuel cost across that 20-year useful life of the facility? Um, and summarizing all of that in the, in the triangle, we have the total mitigation benefits, uh, came out to 529, uh, million. And then the total mitigation project cost, uh, came out to 361 million. You may say, well, that's more than the 145 million you put on the previous slide. What happened? Uh, that incorporates the additional O and M cost, um, and the per- uh, projected fuel cost over the 20 years, um, that will be required to run and maintain the LPG facility. Um, that math resulted in a benefit cost ratio of 1.47, um, which is greater than the 1.0. Uh, therefore, the activity, uh, from the, uh, benefit, the quantitative benefit analysis is worth pursuing. Next. So, uh, is this activity a fit for MIT? Uh, can we utilize this funding, uh, to perform this activity? Um, so going back to that criteria, um, does it improve resilience? does it improve resilience? Yes, because the utility will be gaining access to bunker fuel storage capacity. As I indicated previously, the tanks are stored in concrete bunkers. Therefore, they are less susceptible to damage from windstorms, which have a history of impacting the territory. Does it address the risk identified in the mitigation needs assessment as informed by the territorial hazard mitigation plan? Yes, we already went through the threats to the energy lifeline. And acquiring this asset will significantly mitigate that risk. Is it an eligible activity? Per the HUD guideline reference previously, acquisitions are an eligible activity. And this is an acquisition whereby the authority will take custody, title and ownership of all LPG assets. And does it satisfy a national objective? Yes, in this instance, the national objective that is satisfied is the urgent need mitigation national objective, which was a special national objective that was written into the FRN for projects of this nature. All of that verbiage results in the fact that this is a mitigation project. But as I mentioned previously, for a covered project which has a cost threshold of $100 million or more or $50 million or more of CDBG money, there are additional criteria. And in the next slide, we will go over the additional criteria. So it meets the definition of a MIT project. Additionally, there must be a long-term operations and maintenance plan. The authority has proffered in the substantial amendment and subsequent narrative a plan outlining their 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 strategy for successfully operating and maintaining these assets throughout its remaining useful life of 20 years. So therefore, they do have a plan. Secondly, does it have that benefit cost ratio threshold of 1.0 or greater? As was demonstrated previously, it is 1.47 in this instance. Additionally, is it consistent with the other mitigation activities and the addressing the threats to the lifelines? Yes, it does. And then, of course, the cost threshold, it's 145 million dollar project cost. And that is entitled to be intended to be funded entirely by CDBG MIT money. So it passes that other $50 million threshold. And that results in a covered project. So this project does meet the both the definition of a MIT project and the definition of a covered project. Next. So will it work? Which is a big question. The answer is yes, because the way that it addresses the threats to the energy lifeline that currently persists were clearly outlined. And in this case, WAPA will be acquiring or the utility will be acquiring 18 in total across both islands, fuel tanks, LPG fuel tanks that are stored in concrete bunkers that will bolster the fuel supply in the territory by 27 days for Saint Thomas and 20 days for Saint Croy. It also offers the authority the ability to receive fuel at an alternative point, which is the offshore mooring buoy 5.3 nautical miles to the south of Saint Thomas. And it also allows the authority to acquire an additional fuel dispensing point, which is the truck rack. Additionally, the authority, as I indicated, has proffered a operations and maintenance plan for the projected useful life of the assets. And they have already demonstrated that they have the ability to fund that operations and maintenance because they're currently doing it. The authority is current on all of their obligations pursuant to the fuel supply contract with VTAL. So they're already paying it. We don't anticipate any reason why they would stop in the future. And additionally, the authority has intended as indicated that they will acquire a third party to operate and maintain this facility when they receive ownership of it. So therefore, the operations and maintenance aspect of the project is well fleshed out. It is important to note, however, that operations and maintenance is not a CDBG eligible cost. So the 145 million dollars that was indicated for the total project cost is solely for the acquisition. It does not incorporate any operations and maintenance money. WAPA will be funding that through their revenue collection. So with that being said, I will turn it back over to our PIO. And then we'll go into the rounds of questioning. And I will be remiss if I did not acknowledge the presence of of some important faces in the audience. I have with us Mr. Jacob Lewis. He is the chief financial officer of VI WAPA. He's here to the front. I also have Mr. Avery Lewis, who is the Saint Thomas, Saint John Water Island administrator. I have Ms. Graciela Rivera, who is the territorial hazard mitigation officer. And I have Mr. Pete Ginngrass, who is the Energy TCT coordinator who represents the Department of Energy. That's all I can see. I don't have my glasses, so I'm kind of running out. But anyway, thank you very much. And after the the subsequent slides, we'll go into the round of questioning.
All right. Thank you so much for that, O'Dari. This is our third presentation, our first public hearing. Our first public hearing was on June 29th. The second one was on July 6th. This I'm sorry, the public comment period opened on July 6th. The second public hearing was on July 12th last week, Wednesday in Saint Croy. Today is July 19th. This one is the Saint Thomas one. Obviously, this is the third public hearing. If you do not get an opportunity to ask your questions, again, we ask that you yes, we ask that you email us your questions to media@vihfa.gov. The last day for public comment is August 7th because we have to get all of our documentation together and send it off to HUD on August 12th. So again, if you don't get to ask your question here tonight, or if you just want to dig a little bit deeper, please email us at media@vihfa.gov before on or before August 7th. So at this time, we'll open the floor for questions. I'll walk around with the mic. This this one? So we open the floor for questions. There's this mic here in the center. Floor is open.
So good evening, everybody. My first question goes to I WAPA and I guess the authority as well. You mentioned that it's 145 million dollars that will be now going to WAPA. How would that affect the overall funding in the infrastructure category in terms of the plan that you guys were looking at when you designated the total sum of money to that category?
So I'm assuming you're referring to the project list that is incorporated in the original action plan? Okay, great. So the thing to note about that were, I think that list consists of about 50 or more projects. And those were all potential projects. None of those projects were guaranteed for funding. They were all proposed with coordination from the other entities of activities that, you know, would like to be done, but those were not guaranteed for funding. The only project that we are proffering at this time guaranteed for funding is the VTAL acquisition through this substantial amendment. Any other project would have to go through the standard application process for it. And this is the standard application process, by the way, for a covered project. You start off with the substantial amendment. But to answer your question directly, that list was just proposed projects. None of those were guaranteed for funding. Hi, good afternoon.
I'm so confused.
Hopefully, I can clarify. Sure.
This morning, I heard Mr. Avery and the young lady on the radio asking for feedback for people to come out and, you know, learn something about this grant thing. And then I come here and I get a WAPA presentation. I wasn't expecting that. But let's just say that you have damn near a billion dollars, right?
774 million.
Okay, close enough. And you are giving 150 to WAPA. That leaves us with 500 million dollars. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, how do we partake or how do we, you know, how me that I came here thinking that maybe I could write a grant for whatever? How do I participate in the remainder of this funding?
Okay, so what I would encourage you to do is, have you read the action plan that's published on our website?
As I said, I was listening to my, my, my administrator saying that we don't participate. There were 25 people in Saint Saint Croy and there's 15 here today, maybe 12.
Got you.
And he was, he was very emotional about coming down and trying to be be part of this, this, this grant that is here that we can work together now.
Yes.
I'm a professor and a police officer. How does, how does a professor and a police officer work within this to get something for my students, for the police department? How does that work?
Great. So what I would encourage you to do first is to familiarize yourself with the federal register notice, which is identified on one of the earlier slides. It is published on our website under the mitigation tab. And that is the governing document that basically identifies how this pool of money can be utilized. Then I would also encourage you to read the action plan, which is again published on our website in the mitigation tab that tells you how the different threats, because it all has to do with the risks that are identified in that mitigation needs assessment. So if you can proffer a project that will address a risk that is identified in that mitigation need assessment, then we can pursue the other eligibility criteria and determine if that project is eligible for funding. And that's the governing guidelines for qualifying for this pool of funding. The reason that we're here for WAPA is because there has been a risk that was identified to the energy lifeline. WAPA actually lost tank number 10, he'll correct me if I'm wrong, in Saint Thomas through the Erman Maria disaster, that tank sustained damage. And we are trying to mitigate the risk of WAPA's fuel supply being impacted again adversely for future disasters. So no, we, as I indicated previously, we have four buckets of activities. And if you can identify a project that satisfies the risk in the mitigation need assessment and falls into one of those four pools of activities and meets a national objective along with the other eligibility criteria, then it will qualify for funding. Thank you. Hi, good evening.
I'm going to identify myself because I'm there from the office of Senator Potter, who's in charge of the disaster recovery and infrastructure committee in the legislature. One of the things that we discussed in our office is the fact that you have varying levels of comprehension. You have varying levels of just people being frustrated. So one of the, the, the charges that the senator has given is we need to work closely with you. One, to break it down. And don't send people to your website. Because that's not going to happen. They're not going to comprehend some of what you're saying. So today I would like to ask, how do we, the senator's office and maybe anybody else in here who'd be willing to assist, really kind of get involved with this project to make it more explainable and more attainable for just the general public, to help them understand what parts of it really applies to them individually or as a community? How do we do that?
So to answer the first comment about not sending people to the website, per the federal register notice, we are required to publicize on the website. So unfortunately, we won't be able to accommodate that request. Secondly, our director, Director Clint Dinan is greatly appreciative of all the public turnout and interest in that pool of funding. And I'm sure that she will be more than happy to work with Senator Potter's office and any of his constituents in order to proffer educational opportunities to educate the public. So I would encourage you or the chief of staff or someone else from his office to reach out to Director Clint Dinan, or you can reach out to our media team at the address that is indicated on the slide. And I'm sure that we will be able to foster a collaborative effort to help the public understand. Thank you very much.
WAPA has always been current with their fuel payments to VTAL. Did I hear that correctly or not?
No, I said WAPA is current.
Oh, they, okay, all right. And to that question, with WAPA purchasing the assets, are they still going to be required to purchase the fuel from VTAL or would they be going on the open market to purchase fuel?
Okay, so I will answer and then I'll defer to Jake. He may be able to elaborate more eloquently than I may. But acquiring this asset will give WAPA the ability to purchase fuel on the open market in hopes that that will allow them to source it more competitively. Currently, the way the agreement is structured is WAPA has to only purchase fuel from one fuel supplier, who I will not name publicly. But I will defer to Jake if he has any additional insight that he can offer on that asset.
Thank you, O'Dari, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for your question. So yeah, so just to clarify, O'Dari's answer in terms of WAPA being current with VTAL, that was actually when you were describing the operation and maintenance. But you are exactly correct that WAPA is current on payments for fuel under its fuel supply agreement. And it's also current on the operation and maintenance costs associated with the current operation of the facility. When this facility is acquired, we will be able to procure propane fuel from anyone that we want to. Currently, we're only able to procure fuel through VTAL as a sole provider. So this will be the first time that we'll have the ability to bring in a competitive market and get the absolute best price possible. We are in advanced negotiations with several potential providers and expect to have a contract in place with a new provider very shortly and in time to replace supply immediately once the transaction is completed. And based on those negotiations, we do expect a substantial reduction, particularly in the cost to transport propane to the territory.
Sir.
With WAPA being able to purchase the assets, right? How do you overall see that financially, WAPA is going to benefit from this 145 million dollar purchase? Besides the fact that, okay, now you, you have this asset, but in terms of day-to-day operation, because you still have to purchase the fuel. And my recollection is you weren't really able to meet the fuel cost. The government had to do something with the governor and, and I don't remember the name of the bill that they had to pass to help pay for the fuel. So my question is, even with us paying for the asset, how do you see that?
how do you see that being able to structurally place WAPA in a place where they're going to be able to afford fuel moving forward?
So again, appreciate the question. It's a great question. So if you go back several years, there have been many times where WAPA hasn't been able to pay for its fuel in a timely fashion. And you are correct that over the past year or so, the government of the Virgin Islands did provide financial support to WAPA to help, help it procure its fuel. During the last year, fuel prices, in particular diesel prices, were at all-time highs at levels that were substantially above what is in customers' current rates. And the government providing that financial support allowed WAPA to procure the fuel it needed without having to pass that cost on directly to its customers. The biggest reason that this transaction is so important from a financial perspective for WAPA is that, again, historically, yes, of course, has had problems financially meeting the biggest part of the VTAL contract, which is what was the infrastructure payment, which its inability to make those payments at times has led to VTAL refusing to provide fuel. And that left the authority only able to use one fuel, which is diesel, which is much more expensive. And that is a tremendous risk to WAPA and to the territory. And so if WAPA were to lose access to this asset, its fuel cost would go up based on today's fuel prices, about 60%. Ultimately, that would have to be a cost that would be borne by WAPA's customers, which none of us want. We're also in the process, very close to completing some major projects, particularly here on St. Thomas, for the installation of new generators that are much more efficient and cost-effective than our older generators that are in operation today. Our most recent installation prior to that only burned propane. So without access to this fuel, we lose all the economic benefits of those new generators, right? And so it really is critical to getting the cost for fuel down that can be supported in current rates and then setting a foundation from which there is the potential for rates to be reduced in the future. And none of that is possible if we lose access to these assets. And I will point out, we did have our budget hearing last night. WAPA did present a budget that showed, based on the completion of some of these projects, the ability to pay for its fuel supply without the funding from the government that we received in the prior year.
And I'd also like to add that what Jake touched upon is the newer generators that WAPA has burn propane. And the newer generators are more reliable than the older ones. So this, approving this project, not only in terms of a financial perspective is advantageous, but also specifically from a reliability perspective, will allow WAPA to continue utilizing its newer, more reliable generators, thus reducing the risk to the inhabitants of the territory and addressing that threat of unreliability to the energy lifeline.
Okay, so I'm going to step away from WAPA for a minute. The general mitigation can, how the plan is outlined right now, can an individual apply for funding or do you have to be some type of an organized entity?
Are you talking about like a single person?
Yeah, an individual, yes. Like the young man who spoke before, can an individual apply or do you have to be a legally organized entity?
To the best of my knowledge, I believe that you have to be an organized entity. And again, the, the category for mitigation funding, it has to meet those criteria, right? And, and one of the other things is we have to assess the, the effectiveness of the projects quantifiably and report on that. So obviously, organized entities are easier to assess. I will be honest with you, for housing, I am not sure. So I would encourage you to submit that question to our media team. And there are specific program managers for each activity pool that are specialists in those areas. And they will be able to specifically respond to those types of questions. Hi, good evening.
Good to represent Annasville Homeowners Association. We are condo association and I'm on the board. My name is Yvonne Watson. And I heard about this meeting on the administrator's corner.
Yes.
Very interesting. So I'm here today. I would like to know, like the young lady asked, if, how does this apply to housing? Because we need a retaining wall and for the past several years, I've been trying to lobby various senators so that we could get assistance in having a retaining wall. Because the developers who sold these condos, they did not include a retaining wall. And now we're having a lot of erosion and I'm very concerned as a homeowner. So that's what I'm here to find out. How can this money, you know, help with our association?
So as I mentioned previously, we have specific program managers for the individual activities. And this public hearing was garnered specifically to get information for the substantial amendment that incorporates the VTAL acquisition. So I will have to kind of refocus the meeting towards questions pertaining to the VTAL acquisition. But I do encourage you, please, submit those questions to media@vihfa.gov and they will be able to get a response for you. Do we have any other questions regarding the VTAL acquisition specifically? Hi, good evening.
I'm here for faith organization.
Sure.
Could it be involved in this program project?
Again, it would probably depend on what type of activity you're proposing. This, again, this project or this amendment is only to incorporate the VTAL. But there is a public services and facility activity that is a part of the mitigation funding and it may be able to take advantage of that.
Public service, you say?
Yes. Public services and facilities.
Would I go up in there?
Yeah, so I mean, we have it. Yes, sure. Well, this is a 12-year grant cycle, 12 years. So you, you have time. April 23rd of 2023, I think, which is when we executed the grant agreement with HUD. So there is time.
Good evening, Mr. Thomas.
Hi, good evening.
And good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Every Louis. One of the things I don't want you to make the people feel is courage for coming here this evening because, you know, a lot of them heard not only me on the radio this morning, the whole morning, Edwards from your team on the radio encouraging people to come out to be part of it. One of the things we need to sit tonight is one of the reasons why WAPA is here is because WAPA is getting, you know, a chunk of this money to mitigate their process. So we need to let them know that the way is our original plan. Are we making an amendment to it?
Right.
But, you know, they're still eligible, they still could find out if their needs, it's a viable project that could be paid for by the CDBG-DR funding.
Mid, in this case.
Mid, yes. Mitigation project. So, you know, those, you know, I want nobody to feel that, okay, everyone doesn't already tell us come and we don't have the input. So the other projects is going to be undertaken by this, it's whole 774 million. WAPA is only looking 150, 145?
45, 145.
145 for now. And then yeah, yeah, we want efficient power, we want good things, so.
No, that actually, Mr. Lewis is actually a very salient point. So what I would encourage participants who may not necessarily have a VTAL acquisition-related question to do is to take note of this process. If they work for, or if they're proposing an activity that meets the threshold of a covered project, they will have to go through this similar project.
You know, and they may have some projects on their mind, maybe their road deteriorated. You know, they want to improve the drainage or something. So they want to do whatever they have to do through Department of Public Works or to private contractor or bring, bring it forward to be included in this. So then make sure that, just like the young lady talked about, retaining wall and so forth. I don't know, the faith basement want to do something to attract other people to build the infrastructure for the church. I don't know.
Right.
But, you know, just keep them engaged.
Oh, definitely.
I just want to redirect because for the public hearing that we had on St. Croix last week, we had some really good questions and I just wanted to make sure that the information got out here in St. Thomas as well. So if WAPA does not acquire these funds from us, what could happen?
As Mr. Lewis indicated, it can put WAPA in a position where they are forced to utilize a more expensive and less environmentally friendly fuel source, namely diesel, to generate their power. And that may possibly result in escalating fuel costs for them. But I will defer for him to give you all of the bad news himself.
Brothers by a different mother. Pleasure to meet you. So again, good question. So if, I apologize. So if this project is not completed for WAPA, then WAPA will be at very significant risk of losing access to these facilities altogether. These facilities really are the backbone of the power generation system in the territory. And the biggest immediate impact would be a dramatic increase in the authorities' fuel cost. Would also, as Adari mentioned, make us more susceptible to fuel supply chain disruptions, reduce our fuel capacity, storage capacity, which could unfortunately increase the duration or the length of time to, you know, recover from future disasters. But losing access to these facilities and all the benefits they produce is the most likely outcome.
Or you will be able to acquire the, the resources?
So the transaction will close as soon as the funds, as soon as the HUD process completes and those funds are made available and that transaction will, the transaction will close immediately thereafter. And that will be the end of the project.
The comments that you've received during the, the hearing, what purpose or how do you use those comments in terms of determining whether or not HUD is going to approve this project amendment? Like, do you have to address each comment? Like, how does that work? Like, what value is a public input? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Right, so the purpose of all of this public comment period, actually, which again is outlined for a specified period in the federal register notice, is to solicit and gather the feedback from the community that will be documented and forwarded to HUD when they are considering whether or not they will approve this amendment. So right now, we're in the middle of the 30-day, roughly, thereabout, 30-day public comment period. And it's important to note that not only is the public's comments being solicited, but we also are soliciting the comments from what is called the TCT, the Technical Coordination Team, which is mandated by our grant agreement with HUD. That is comprised of our federal partners, of which there are various entities. But most notably, it's headed, that TCT is headed by the Department of Energy. They're the spearhead. So the TCT as a whole is also going to be providing their comments on this amendment. And all of that will be incorporated and submitted to HUD for consideration. So it's not only our eyes working on it, not only WAPA's eyes looking at it. We do have participation from our federal partners on the mainland.
We have no more questions. We would like, again, to thank everyone for coming out tonight. The public comment period is closing August 7th. So we recorded your questions here tonight. If you have any more questions or comments that you would like to make, we ask that you send it to media@vihfa.gov and title it CDBG Mitigation Action Plan Amendment. If I remember that clearly, CDBG. There it is. My glasses. Substantial Amendment One. Title it Substantial Amendment One, CDBG Mid Action Plan. What I will do, I recorded everyone's emails here. I recorded everyone's emails. I will forward you the presentation tomorrow as well as the email address so you can forward us your questions. So you're welcome. So again, thank you so much on behalf of interim executive director Dana Clint Dinan. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.